I'd like to welcome all of you to our first town hall meeting on school safety. If you're a parent, grandparent, employee of Huntington County Community Schools, we welcome you and thank you for taking the time to come out here this evening and learn more about school safety and what we're doing here in Huntington County Community Schools. To kind of go over a little bit about what the agenda will be about, hopefully everybody was able to pick up an agenda in the back of the room. We will be going over several pieces of what school safety looks like in our corporation and also a little bit about the history. And then we will follow up with a question and answer session at the very end. As you can see, we have two mics up here at the front of the stage. We'd ask at the, when we start the question and answer session, you can come up and then address your question to one of our panelists. We're very fortunate to have a great relationship with law enforcement here in Huntington County and also with the state police. As you can see, we have Jamie Kraft, who is our school safety specialist for our corporation. We have Chad, Chief Chad Hacker from the Huntington Police Department. We also have Trent Kiefer from the Indiana State Police, Amy Richardson, our local prosecutor, Sheriff Terry Stoffel, and our Superintendent, Mr. Randy Harris. So I'd like to welcome you tonight for this evening. Please jot some questions down that you may have. And again, we take this topic very seriously. I am a father of five children and one of our, my most prized possession is not my house, not my car, it's my children. And I want to thank all of you for trusting us with your children and their safety when they come to our schools. So, welcome and enjoy the show. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Russ Diggs. He is the principal Huntington North High School and he is doing his dissertation on school safety, working on his doctorate. So he's going to share some of the information he's been able to pick up through his research. So, Mr. Russ Diggs.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Doherty shared in terms of how thankful we are that you have chosen to attend this evening. Obviously, a topic that brings a whole myriad of emotions in terms of how serious it is and what we think of when we think of school safety and the things that may come from it. But similar to Mr. Doherty and actually several that are on the stage this evening, I'm a father of two that attend this school district and so there is a true investment in this topic for us and there's a vested interest to make sure that we get this right. So, please know that we sit in your seat with you as people that are very interested in making sure that we keep our schools as safe as possible. I'm going to spend a brief time just kind of going over kind of the history of school safety and some of the things that we think about when you hear the term "school safety." This quote really resonated with me. I won't insult your intelligence by reading it to you, but Nelson Mandela obviously made it his life goal to try and spread and preserve peace throughout the world. And when we think about what our goal is as a school to educate children, part of that equation has to be keeping them safe. And so, we are not doing our job as a district, as a school, or really as a society if we can't ensure that our students will be safe. So that's the goal of everything that we're here for tonight, to make sure that we can create the safest possible environment for them. As it says here and as we all acknowledge, school safety is not a new topic, it's one that's actually been around for some time. I've got some different points cited here, but ultimately, it's a critical responsibility of all stakeholders. And so, we hope that tonight you're here because you want to learn about what we do as a district, but we also hope to provide you with information that you'll be able to take with you and work on with your children or be able to contribute to from a, from a community standpoint because it does take a partnership. That whole adage that it takes a village to raise a child also comes true when you think about school safety. Yes, it's a school responsibility, but I think there are so many things required of it that it becomes everyone's responsibility. We don't like to think about the tragedies that can happen in schools, but it's almost irresponsible not to from a proactive standpoint and a responsive standpoint. And so, our school district and Huntington North High School that I, that I work with and work in understand that. And so, we take a lot of efforts each day to make sure that we acknowledge that these things are happening in our, in our world and in our nation. And so, we take steps to address that. It's not a new phenomenon, as shown here in this table. School tragedies, school shootings, school incidents have happened ever since colonial days and you can even trace some back to pre-colonial days when Native Americans actually attacked a village school. And so, this is not something that has popped up within the last couple of decades. A couple of things to keep in mind though, when you think about, it seems like every time you turn on the TV or tune into the news, you see a school shooting or a safety issue that involves schools. Number one, the reason that seems to be true is because of the advent of social media and technology. When these things were happening back in the 17 and 1800s and even the 1900s, they occurred but not as many people knew about them. Now, an event cannot happen without seemingly everybody hearing about it and knowing about it. And so, yes, it's true that the frequency has increased, but keep in mind that social media and technology has made that a little bit more prevalent in terms of awareness. The other thing that I would ask you to think about is, and this maybe becomes a little uncomfortable, so I don't mean to scare you in terms of things outside of school safety, but statistics would actually show that children are safer at school than just about anywhere during their school day. And I know that seems counterintuitive when I just talked about and you see the figures here in front of you, but these are the things that capture the headlines. It doesn't capture unfortunately or fortunately a headline for the news if a child is struck by a car chasing a ball out into the street in their neighborhood or have an accident in a pool and don't survive. And so, those things don't capture the attention, but it's actually statistically more likely that a child would be injured or die closer to home. And so, not to, again, raise up fears outside of this, but when you think about the fact that millions and millions and millions of students come to and from school every day and do it relatively safely, especially here in the state of Indiana, it's comforting to know that that still happens. The last thing I'll share is that the good news is, and I'll transition then into the next portion of our evening, that school safety and the research behind it and the interventions available to schools are really starting to catch up. For the longest time, when school tragedies were occurring, when shootings were occurring, it was just one of those things where it really tugged on people's heartstrings, but there wasn't much that people knew to do about it. And now, with the attention afforded to it, with research that's being paid to it, with time, energy, effort, and money, there are now a lot of options for schools. And so, tonight, in just a few moments, you're going to hear about some of those that Huntington County Community Schools have chosen to engage in. Just like about anything, there are millions and millions of opportunities out there, but we have strategically and intentionally chosen the paths that we've taken to keep our schools and our students safe. One of them that you'll hear about quite frequently tonight is Alice, and that's something that hopefully you've heard about before tonight and maybe get a little bit further information on. But I would leave you with the idea that tonight is about informing you of the proactive approach we're taking. We haven't buried our hands, heads in the sand and said that this is an issue that occurs somewhere else. We've acknowledged the fact that it's a challenge, that it's an issue. Fortunately, we have not had an issue here in our school district with tragedy occurring, but we also want to make sure that we are responsible and do our due diligence in making sure that we're prepared. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Jamie Kraft. She is our identified school safety leader here in the school district and she's going to share a little bit more information about Alice and the other interventions that we've done to address the concerns that we have with school safety.
You can clap if you like when he goes off, so it's not as awkward right there. Good evening, my name is Jamie Kraft and I'm a Dean of Students here at Huntington North High School. I've been born and raised in Huntington, went to school here when I was a student as well, so I take great pride in our community and our town and the partnership that we have with local and state law enforcement. Tonight, we're going to show a video regarding Alice. Alice is our response to an intruder in our buildings. This is something that we've been teaching our kids for quite some time. You may or may not be aware of it. We've sent home multiple pieces of information to share with you as well, so some of you may have seen this video. The video we're going to share with you explains what Alice is. And we, just to make you aware, this video is shown to high school students and middle school students. Our elementary students have a special book that the Alice Institute created so that it's more age-appropriate for them as they learn how to respond in the event of an intruder. Alice originally started from a gentleman who, whose wife was an elementary principal and after Columbine, he wanted to keep her school and her students safe, so he created this process. Many of you, just like I, went through, we mainly locked down in the event of an emergency when I was a student. Alice gives our students and staff the opportunity to make the best decision, whether it be lockdown and barricade in the classroom or to evacuate to a reunification point. We want to increase survivability and Alice allows us to do that. The next thing you'll see on this screen is a system called Raptor, just because I'm curious. Can you raise your hand if you know what Raptor is and it's not the dinosaur? All right. So, Raptor is the system that we use in all of our school buildings as a visitor management system so that we can track who comes in and out of our buildings. Through Raptor, you may, may have already been through the process, when you come to one of our schools, you have to buzz in and go to the office. Once you're in the office, you have your driver's license that is scanned. The reason we have that is so that we can run it through a sex offender database and also we run it through our system. Through the Raptor system, we can put in private alerts. For example, situations where the mother or the father is not allowed to have contact with a student, we're able to put those alerts in the system so that we can maintain another level of security with our students. When a private alert happens, we are, the law enforcement and school administrators are contacted so that we can handle this situation right away. The next part of our slideshow will have our safety across the corporation. Superintendent, Mr. Harris, will be discussing some of the things we have done across our district.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraft. Yeah, I'm just going to kind of do a review of some of the things that we do and go through this long list to let you know that, you know, we don't wait for an incident to happen to make separate preparations, but we're continually doing this. Before I even get into all of this, I also want to recognize at least one person here in the audience, and it's hard to see from up here, you don't know it until you get up here, but just to show, I think we've talked about all of the support we get from law enforcement, you'll continue to hear that from the prosecutor's office and from all of those, but also welcome Mayor Fetter's to the audience also this evening, appreciate his attendance also. The first one we've got, we have there is the Safe School Commission. We have school safety officers, we have, I believe, eight of those in the school district along with law enforcement meet on a monthly basis of what's going right, what's going wrong, what do we need to do. That's just kind of a general way of doing things, but then we get into more stuff and a lot of this is the high school, but it's not just the high school. We're doing a lot of these things, whether it's an elementary school, the middle schools, our alternative schools, or other locations throughout the district. The other one that the high school does is they have a staffing at the courthouse. A lot of this instances and things that you hear about right now, they're talking also about mental health and the problems that we have with this. And so, we bring all of these resources together. This is not just a school problem to solve and it's, you're on your own. We bring a lot together and weekly, there's a meeting at the courthouse. Some of the offices that are part of that are the probation office, the prosecutor's office, we have Bowen representatives from the Bowen Centers, people from YSB, the Youth Services Bureau, which deals also with, all of this is dealing with at-risk kids, kids that have had run-ins with the law and keeping track on where are these students, what's happening, all of those kind of things. We have a great partnership with probation. I know this is one, I don't believe has went on a lot of years, but we found tremendous benefit of that and that is that the probation officers actually have an office here at the high school every day except for Monday. And what that really provides is that, again, those, a couple of things. First off, those students that have been in, in the court system, they don't have to sign out of school and say, hey, I'm going to the courthouse and they may or may not make it to probation, but by bringing the probation officers here, it gives them easy access to it, it gives the probation officers easy access to those particular students. And again, it's just another check that we have on a regular basis. Next item listed there, security checks. We do this a couple of times a year and what this is, is all of our school buildings, we anticipate that during the school day, there's going to be one entry into that building and that's where we talked about the Raptor system and people coming in and checking and that way getting an ID badge. But what the security checks do is we have somebody that essentially is an everyday person and they are making an attempt to get into the school simply by checking doors, are the doors locked, can they walk in? One of the problems that I've seen in the past unfortunately or fortunately is we have a lot of nice kids, so it may even be going to the door and knocking going, hey, I can't get in, can you let me in? We tell our kids, don't let them in. This is one time, we don't want them to be nice. And, but if the person does get into the building, then obviously they go walking around the building without any type of identification. They don't have a school ID on, they don't have a Raptor badge on, and we see how long can they wander the building before they are confronted by somebody, whether it's a student, a teacher, an administrator, that says, hey, what are you doing here? Have you checked in at the office? Let's make sure you go down there. So, this is a way that we do random checks to see how well we're doing it, monitoring that part. The other one, scenario drills with students and staff. And when we're talking about safety, we're not just talking about active shooters. Remember, we have a lot of other things and I know we're in that stage in Indiana that there are tornado watches and warnings and thunderstorms and all of those kind of things, but during the year, we have lockdowns in case there is an active shooter, we have tornado warnings, we have fire drills. And so, we're not looking at just one area of safety, but we're looking at the total safety of students in all of the ways that they may or may not be affected. So, we do those drills with students and staff throughout the year. Active shooter scenario. This is one we don't do a lot. I believe the last one was back in, I think, 2015, but we are now scheduled to have another active shooter training with our staff in August of this year. If we come back to school, we're going to be doing that training again. SOS, this is called Sources of Strength, and this is really looking at mental health, mentoring, keeping, again, track of those kids and providing them the assistance they need if they are a troubled person or they're, they're just having, they're going through a tough time. It may be those kinds of things that we work with. Youth Services Bureau, they're, they, again, are that midway point of what we do, do we do between, you know, the students that simply come to school, the students that may have trouble that are still in school, or students that need time away from a traditional school building. And the Youth Services Bureau really provides a great benefit to our community and work with those students. And the final one we have here listed are the Bowen Centers. And we have Bowen people in all of our buildings, but the other thing that we have that we have contracted with Bowen for, for this school year and we're working on it, continuing on with that agreement throughout the next school year, and that is there's also a student assistance program. If a student would come to a teacher, if they would come to a guidance counselor, if they'd come to an administrator and say, you know, I'm having some real problems, you know, it could be, you know, a close relative passed away, or they may just be going through a really difficult time in their life, we have contracted with Bowen that they will provide two evaluation sessions totally free of charge for that student and determine do they need additional help? Are they fine? Where should they go? So, we work with that. Couple other things that we have that aren't listed on here, but again, look, working with law enforcement that people don't realize is during the lunchtime at the high school, we have a school resource officer here most of the time when he's not out in other buildings, but also during lunch, there are two active city police officers that usually come in. Depending on the time of year, we may have a couple of retired officers that come in to help during the lunchtime. We have regular K-9 searches of the high school, looking for any types of things that shouldn't be going on there. And finally, just as kind of a matter of normal procedures, the police officers will also wander the parking lots, meaning, you know, instead of just driving up and down the streets, they'll make a maneuver over and come through the parking lot and just check and make sure things are okay outside the school as part of their routine patrols around town. So, those are some of the things that we're doing within the school district, but it's not just a one-shot, one-way of dealing with this. It's a, it's a whole wide, wide breadth of services and programs that we take on. So, that gives a little bit of that one. And now, I think I'm going to turn it back to Mrs. Kraft. I guess if you got the clap when you left, you need to get a clap, clap when you return. So, welcome back, Mrs. Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Unfortunately, we need to talk about what do we do if something would happen. So, just to make you aware as parents and community members, if something would happen, we have a process that's called reunification where we will reunify your students with you. At the beginning of every school year, we have to complete a program called InfoSnap. When you register your, your children, I have a second grader and gonna be a kindergartner, you register your children on InfoSnap. The information that you put in there goes directly into Power School and goes directly into our reunification forms. You can see a picture of that form on the right-hand side. That form allows us to know who is all right to pick up your student in the case of an emergency. We may have to evacuate our building for multiple reasons, but if we have to evacuate and move to a new location, you guys will get information of where we're going and then we would ask that you go there and we will have a process for you to be reunified with your students. One big thing that we need to make sure that you understand as community members, and I know Master Trooper Kiefer will be talking about it as well, is that if there is an emergency at the school, do not come to the school. They need to make sure law enforcement is able to get here and take care of business. We ask that parents and community, you go to the reunification site, do not come to the, the place of the emergency. At the beginning of the year, the information, like I said, is put into InfoSnap. At any point, you can contact your school secretary to update any information that you have so that we have accurate phone numbers and names for those people. In the event of reunification, just like you do when you come into our building, you'll have to have identification in order to pick up your child. Without further ado, Master Trooper Trent Kiefer will take the next part.
Okay, mine's really short, or hopefully will be short and sweet. First off, I think I'll be the third one to thank you for being here. I will be honest, I was hoping this place would be full. I'm a little disappointed. I'm kind of hoping that people would, this community would take a little bit more serious than this or... But if you could, let the information that you're hearing from us today, spread it around, especially some of the things that Mrs. Kraft went over with, what to expect at a, at an event. Don't go to the event, don't go to the event. If you go to the event, you may be treated as the suspect. There's going to be a lot of police officers that may be at that event. Do not go to the event. Go to the reunification location and you'll be able to get to your children a heck of a lot quicker. First off, what, what can you do? First, we all heard, if you see something, say something, if you hear something, say something, but we want you to do that in a very responsible way as adults. It is not to post it on social media. It's call 911 or call one of the administrators. And we, as law enforcement and as the administrators, we will investigate and see if it's a valid threat and see if any of the students are in danger, but do not post it on social media, I ask of you, because that, that's just, it'll start a whirlwind of problems that none of us want to be able to deal with. Second, well, make a plan with your family. The cellphone thing that we have going on here in society is awesome, but if an event happens, kind of like during 9/11, the cellphones in this area, the towers, may go down. You may not be able to communicate with your, with your student, they may not be able to communicate with you. Have a backup plan. And if I may, that backup plan would be, hey, I'll meet you at the reunification location. You'll be in the hands of the teachers, you'll be in the hands of law enforcement officers. Know that I'm praying for you, know that I'm thinking about you, know that I love you, I will meet you there. Do what they tell you to do and I will, I'll do what they tell me to do also. And that comes to the fourth thing of, on my list. Follow the instructions of the school and the emergency personnel that are on the scene or at the reunification location. If you follow the instructions, things will go so much more smooth and you'll be able to get to your student, your child, a whole lot quicker. So, just short and sweet, that's all you gotta do. Follow the instructions, please do not post it on social media. And final instructions from me, do not believe everything that you see on social media. I think as adults, we forget that. We're telling our students that and, you know, time and time again about the dangers of, of the internet and of social media, that sometimes we forget ourselves that, you know, maybe we shouldn't be posting certain things on social media that may cause a problem or believing things on social media that may or may not be true. I will go ahead and call up Amy Richardson, the prosecutor.
As many have indicated, most of us have a personal investment in this community right now with children in our school corporation. We don't tell you that for any other reason, for you to know that not only are we professionals, but we're also parents. I have five children, four of whom are either in middle school or high school here, and so when we become aware of threats that even you as a community-wide body are not aware of, I hope you understand that it scares us too and we're taking every step to not only ensure the safety of your children, but our children as well. When there is a threat that is made against a school or a student, those are treated as criminal investigations. Those are involving law enforcement and all potential witnesses. It doesn't matter if it is something that's posted on social media versus something that someone heard, we treat those similarly. As you can imagine, it takes time for us to sort through those comments and statements that are made to trying to determine and assess whether or not it's a credible threat. In the world that we live where everything is posted immediately and there's 24/7 news, I appreciate, I understand that people want to have immediate information about what's happening and what steps are being taken. What we're trying to do is assure you that immediate steps are being taken even if you don't hear about it immediately. There are a lot of time and resources that are concentrated on threats against the school. As you can imagine, we become concerned because we have so many students in our building that we want to avoid tragedy. And what that does is it focuses our time on assessing the danger, figuring out the source of the information, and then the legitimacy of those threats, and it takes a lot of people to sort that out. I know that some of you are familiar with some of the recent threats that have happened because there've been a lot of communications on social media about that. These are cases that have resulted in juvenile prosecutions and that doesn't delight me at all, but it should impress upon you that these are very serious situations and people will be held accountable if they are posting or they're communicating threats about schools or their fellow students. You're not going to see a lot in the paper what ultimately ends up like you do in an adult's case because these are juvenile matters in most instances. And so, again, we're here to reassure you that even though you may not hear about it in the papers or you may not read about it in other circumstances, we are taking steps to hold students accountable. It's important for us to sort out the real threats from those who are joking, but even if students are joking or they indicate that they were joking about the threats, there is accountability. Most of the situations are being treated through the juvenile, juvenile justice system, but they're truly felonies if they were committed by adults. The criminal justice system can handle these cases through an informal procedure through probation, or we can do it formally through the courts. And we may take one track over the other depending upon who the child was who made the threats or substantial history that maybe we've had. As you heard, we meet weekly with the prosecutor's office, juvenile probation, with the administrators at both the middle school and high school levels, with Bowen Center. We are communicating on a weekly basis as a group about troubled students in our community, not only those that are in the criminal justice system, but those that might come into the criminal justice system. And communication is a huge key for us to take steps for prevention. So, we are communicating. There are people on our radar that we're trying to intervene for so that we can prevent situations from happening because we take this so seriously. Our hope is that we can prevent every situation that would create danger to your child. I hope that that's legitimately what we're able to do, but we... I hope that that's legitimately what we're able to do, but realistically, it will not be a failure on our steps or attempts to prevent this in most instances, because we are being so proactive in this community. I would challenge you to go to other communities or friends that you have and ask them if they even know about some of these resources that we are pooling together on a weekly basis in our community. It's because we love our town, we love the people here, and we want to keep everybody safe. I'll give you an example of a situation that it points to the fact that you just don't know what you just don't know about the steps that are taken and how seriously this is. You know, we've had threats that have happened, and we had one in particular, where law enforcement took shifts and they sat on a house for almost 24 hours to try and watch a child that they thought might be bringing weapons to school. And they coordinated with the administrators. We worked together tirelessly through the night. I would not, I lost some sleep, but not like the guys who were up throughout the entire course of the night. And they took steps with the administrators to make sure that this child, for the day of that school day where we were concerned about him bringing weapons to school, was monitored the entire time while he was at the high school. People don't know that. A lot of times, people don't know what is prevented. I'm not saying that would or would not have resulted in a tragedy, but when those things come to our attention, police are not sleeping, prosecutors are not sleeping, administrators are not sleeping to try and keep your children safe, and we are doing the best that we possibly can. So when you start to see posts on Facebook that are critical, I would just hope that you would maybe reflect upon what you've heard here this evening and realize that our hearts are in the right place, our hours in our day are in the right place, and it is our intention fully to keep your children safe, and we are doing everything we possibly can. And we are open to suggestions if you have them. You know, I'm blessed to have some nieces in the Carmel School District, and my sister works in the school corporation, and we talk about these topics. And if we, if I hear of a topic or a suggestion that Carmel's doing that maybe we could implement, you know, we're having those conversations with school administration, we're having those conversations among law enforcement, and I would encourage you to do the same thing. If you have great ideas you're hearing that other schools are doing, that maybe Huntington isn't, I encourage you to contact the administrators, contact law enforcement, contact the prosecutor's office, because we can only be better with additional information. So as you leave here this evening, I hope you will take away the fact that everybody here on stage, plus a lot of the guys out patrolling tonight, are here for you and for your safety, and we are doing the best that we can. And thus far, we've been very accomplished in preventing any tragedies, and I hope that we will be able to make that continue.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. We'd like to echo those thoughts in being proactive. You can see all the proactive steps that we are taking in the corporation. But now we're going to turn it over to our question and answer session. So we've put a lot of information out here for you to kind of think about. If you've got some questions, we'd love to entertain for you to come down and speak into the microphone to one of our panelists. I know there's a lot of hot topics out there. One, I'll probably just go ahead and kick off and to our panel is one that our president has actually told, a lot of our educators should be carrying weapons. So this will be kind of with Mr. Harris and Mr., Sheriff Stoffel, Chief Hacker and Master Trooper Kiefer. What is his stance on the corporation for arming their teachers?
Thanks for the easy question, Mr. Doherty. But it's a serious question, and I know the president's came out that we ought to arm teachers. I will tell you, I'm against that. The reason why is that when you look at the law enforcement officers up here and other places in the auditorium, they spend hours and hours and days and days to provide safety training for those weapons, to use them in an appropriate manner. Our teachers, number one, are entrusted with the safety of your children, but with teaching your children. We go through hours and hours of professional development to make them better teachers, to assist them in their classrooms, and that takes a lot of their effort. And to think, number one, that we're going to have to split that effort to train them equally with law enforcement would be a monumental endeavor. The other part of that is, there would be concern that a teacher, dressed no different than anybody here in the audience, if we should have that type of a situation, they're going to simply be a person with a gun in the hallway when law enforcement is coming in specifically looking for a person with a gun in the hallway. The possibilities of confusion, I think, outweigh the, any benefits that we might gain by that. The other thing specifically in our community, because we've had a couple of nothing serious to that nature, but I can tell you that if any person in the school says, "We need help at school," all of a sudden, it seems like we have 100 police officers. They come out in full force and they are here quickly, and I think their training, their experience outweighs what we would be able to provide for teachers in the classroom. I know there's some other strong points and...
Chief and I have sat down and talked about this at length, and I will tell you that all along, the forces up here are on the same page. I don't want to have to come into the school. I don't know all the teachers. I don't know all the teachers at Riverview. And if somebody's got a gun in their hand and their adrenaline's dumped, they're not gonna, they're just gonna stand and stare at me, and I'm gonna have to take that as a threat. And I don't want to have to be put in that position. I think carrying a weapon has probably been one of the biggest responsibilities besides driving my vehicle that I've had in 29 years. And I don't know that your teachers are going to be able to teach with that kind of responsibility in their pocket or in their ankle and run the risk of being de-armed by somebody that may be as stronger than they are. I just don't think we want to put our teachers, and I don't think they'll be the effective teachers that you want for your children. So I think Mr. Harris made some very good points, and I just kind of echo those. We're here in force, I mean, any of the schools. Warren has a good presence, even out there in Salamone, they have a good presence. Andrews has a good presence. There's none of the schools that we won't drive quickly to get to, to take care of what needs to be taken care of, so.
I can echo what Sheriff Stoffel said. There are no boundaries with law enforcement in Huntington County. It doesn't matter if it's a city case, county incident. City police are going to respond in the county. County's helping us. Andrews is coming to Huntington. There are no boundaries. Any given time, you know, we've got four to six investigators working Monday through Friday, administrative staff. The response time with our schools where they're located is going to be very quick. You know, I think the two biggest concerns we have would be probably Lancaster and Northwest, just because of the, where they are located right now. But you know, with Roanoke, you have a deputy on most every day, Andrews as well. So I think you're gonna see a quick response time, and I echo what Sheriff Stoffel said as far as the teachers and stuff. They have a lot of responsibility on their plate, and we truly don't know who all the teachers are in this building. And it's gonna maybe de-escalate a already tense situation by not having that responsibility on them.
My name is Caroline Brunyan, and I actually teach in Fort Wayne, but my children go to Huntington Schools. And I was just curious about when, how do schools decide to go into lockdown? Do they have to wait for someone to tell them? Can the principal make that call? How do they decide that?
I will probably defer that to Mrs. Kraft as our school safety specialist.
Yep, absolutely. It depends on what the situation is that's going on. I'll give you an example. We've had situations where we have the canines in the building and we go on lockdowns, where people stay in. I will tell you that we are on lockdown all the time. Our classroom doors are locked and shut, even during the school day. So there, we're kind of in a lockdown all the time, but in announced lockdown, any administrator or principal in the building can make that, that decision based on the situation at hand.
Okay. Because last year, I know Huntington North went to a lockdown when there was that guy walking around with his gun, and I was really glad Huntington North made that decision because we lived right on the alley where he was walking. And because they, we were on lockdown, we had to come pick up my daughter. Otherwise, she would've been walking home from the high school right into that area. So I really appreciated that Huntington North went on lockdown that night and that my daughter was safe because they kept her at the high school instead of letting her walk home. So I want to congratulate, I think you guys are doing an amazing job. You're, you're steps ahead of us, because we're still in the go and hide, and we're just starting to learn all of these things for our staff and our students. So I really congratulate Huntington on jumping ahead of the game like this. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to come to the mic, and I guess I would kind of reiterate what Mrs. Kraft said there, but from, from my standpoint, if a administrator or a teacher has belief that the safety of the children may be questioned, and they feel like they need to call a lockdown, I would much rather apologize that we lost, you know, a couple of minutes of education rather than risk harming a student if somebody suspected something of that serious nature.
Okay, so I feel like, and maybe I have missed out on what was said on it, but I feel like it's being addressed as far as, you know, the doors are all locked, there's one entrance into the schools after the start of school. So what is being done to prevent a child or even a parent from walking into the schools at the begin, you know, before school's actually in session? Because at the high school, there's multiple doors that are open. So I, I'm not sure what's being done to prevent someone from walking in during that time of day, when all of the students are kind of meandering in. If there's something that I missed?
I guess what I would tell you, and again, Mrs. Kraft may want to add to this, obviously in any of our buildings, whether it's 1,500 students here at this building, or 200-plus at Salamone Elementary, or, you know, about 500 at our middle schools, or whatever it may be, there is the vulnerable time of how do you get people into the building, meaning they're, they're off of buses, they're at home, they're walking to school in a few cases, or getting students out of the building safely, meaning hopping on buses, or hopping in cars with parents, or whatever it may be. There's always that vulnerable time, that what do you do there? And I think the thing that we do is, again, trying to be vigilant. If you look at most of our buildings, there are adults that are on duty, meaning they're, whether it's wandering the hallways, they're out there on car patrol, helping students get in and out of the buildings. You know, many times, I know here at the high school, other officers maybe making routine drives through here. So there's no question that, that's a difficult time. Maybe this is a time also to add that no matter what we do, there's not anybody up here that's going to say, "This is 100% guaranteed that nothing absolutely can happen to your kid." So, so I think that the fact that adults are present, they're watching students coming and going into the building, helps to alleviate that. And, you know, on a safety side, I would tell you, we have students that trip on curbs, you know, coming into the building. That's not life-threatening, but accidents do happen as we come in and out of it, as we deal with human beings. But I think those are probably the main things that we do, is just being present, watching both coming and going, that if anything would happen, there would be an adult to be able to take a response at that particular time. But, good question.
At the high school, just so you're aware, originally, before, we had, you know, major concerns with school shootings and just safety in general, we had a lot of doors open and people came in, whatever door, and kids were in hallways at the beginning of the day, walking around. I will tell you that now, we only open five doors in the morning, and we have our teachers on morning supervision rotations, so that we have an adult at every single one of those doors that students are coming in. And then we have them go to three centralized locations in the morning, so we can maintain flow in our building and know who's coming in and coming out. Obviously, like Mr. Harris said, it's not possible to do everything, but that's one of the things we're doing as far as morning time goes. Any other times during the day, that's where we're, like, was talked about, just making a plan with your family, being aware of things that just don't look right. We have our janitors let us know anytime something looks suspicious, or maybe they saw someone outside or inside the building that shouldn't have been. We're constantly having those communications so we can follow through with any concerns.
It's just a little bit like crime stuff too with our kids. We rely on our kids to, like Trent said, see something, say something. These kids, in most of these incidents, know of something, or they had some kind of a warning. And so that's where we, as parents and administrators and law enforcement, we need to be really vigilant on making them know how important that is, that they communicate that, or that narcs are saving people's lives.
Right, okay. I appreciate your input on it, and, okay.
One, one thing I'll address that, that I'd like to touch on, and it's when Trent was talking about the social media and how it runs rapid, and all of a sudden, we've got the shooter that's, that's gonna be at the school and how that goes crazy. And I know there was some frustration. I heard that, and this board had dealt with that, about, "Well, the school didn't tell us, didn't tell us that." That's not, that's not true, because we were, like Amy was talking about, we were finding, you know, what was true, wasn't, wasn't true, where it got teed off at, how it got shared, all those technical terms that you guys know far better than I do. But, but we were tearing all the walls down that needed to be tore down, and found out there was very little truth to anything other than it weren't originated out of state. So I will guarantee you that between your school administrators that you have here and the police department, they are 100% and fully prepared to pump out the information to you that's needed to, just as soon as it's substantiated, and we knew, it's, we know it's gonna help with the safety of the kids. But we certainly are not gonna run, panic through the streets and act on gossip and those kinds of things, so.
I want to make sure that I spring forth on that. When you are told by the school corporation that the threat was either not directed at our school, or that it wasn't a legitimate threat, that is a combined decision. It is a combination of law enforcement, the prosecutor's office, and the school corporation coming together with all of the information to make that decision. And so when you hear that, I, as a parent, even if I wasn't in this position, would say, "Oh, really? How did you determine that?" So you know, it's not just one person making that determination, it's a combination of different agencies coming together, sharing information, and ultimately making that conclusion. As you can imagine, that takes time. And when people are posting on Facebook or other forms of social media about things that their daughter said, or their son said, or what they heard was going on, guess what we have to do? We have to track that down then, because we don't know if that was a legitimate component of the threat initially. And so when people start sharing all of these things on social media, it triples exponentially what we have to do to try and figure out whether or not this was a legitimate threat. And so I understand people want to communicate with one another, you want to tell people what you heard. What I would encourage you to do is to resist that, because what it actually does is it makes law enforcement job, it's harder, because people will screenshot a post from Facebook and send it to law enforcement, and then they gotta track that down. And then it, it just, it balloons when people start hopping on social media and start telling what they heard or what their student came home and said. It just multiplies the situation and makes it harder for law enforcement to truly be able to track back all the way to that starting point. So you can help in the prevention effort if you would resist the temptation of utilizing social media to convey what you heard, or what somebody told you, somebody's daughter said. It'll really help us be able to narrow down to the legitimate people that have information so that we can make a quick decision about whether or not there's a legitimate threat to your children.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for this evening. I think it was a wonderful thing for all of you to do, to take time out of your lives and come and explain this to us. But was curious if there's any discussion about metal detectors being put into our schools? I know that there's been a lot of talk about doing a lot of upgrades in our schools, and if any discussion has been made about maybe taking some of the money that is being currently discussed, putting towards our schools, and maybe putting some of that money towards metal detectors to keep our kids safe from kids.
I can tell you that, I have talked to Jamie before about metal detectors, and that's certainly a topic that we're talking about. We implemented that with the courthouse. I mean, that was, we started that, and it took a lot of, took a lot of work, and it took a lot of training, it took a lot, took a lot of resources, and actually, quite frankly, trained the people to walk through there, so it moved smooth. So I would tell you that we've, we're talking about that. It's not off the table, and I've got some resources, maybe. I outfitted the courthouse with used metal detectors in the beginning. There was no cost to the county initially. So we're, we're looking, we're looking at that. I will tell you, yes, we are talking, talking about that.
So is that like a school board discussion? Is that something that's going to be done in the school board discussion?
At this point in time, we've not, we have not had, we have had, we actually had an executive session a month or so ago, I believe, to talk about various security measures that we may or may not do, and what we were doing. And I think most of the people at this table were at that meeting. And at this time, we are not, we have nothing planned to purchase metal detectors at this time. time, but that doesn't mean that we're not looking at continued ways to improve the safety for our kids.
What would be the best way for us as parents to voice our opinions in the right direction, to maybe let the school board and everyone know that it is of interest to us?
I think a couple of things, let the administration know. And likewise, all of our school board members have email addresses, I think they all have phone numbers and those kind of things, and I know they welcome any community concerns regarding our schools, whether it's school safety, or whether it's, you know, what's offered in a math class. So they are very transparent, very open, and would like to hear any of those types of comments to each of the board members also, as well as myself.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thanks again for your time, and I appreciate this. And I think, I would start out by saying, a lot of what you shared is not new to me as a parent of children in your school district, and is also fairly comprehensive, so I feel really good about that. One of the things that I was thinking about is, on my mind throughout all of this, is thinking about teachers, and custodians, and, you know, other kinds of people that maybe haven't come up in the conversation, because they're going to be the ones that oftentimes, as much as we have a comprehensive law enforcement response, are still going to be the ones responding. And I really appreciate your thoughtfulness about not arming them. I think all of the points you made are very good, and make a lot of sense to me, and hopefully to other people as well. And they're still the ones, you know, that are, that are out there, and as, you know, you talked about, in terms of kind of some added responsibilities for watching doors and things like that. I guess I just feel like, as I watch the news, we all watch the news, read the news, and we see in various states, teachers marching about their pay, or having to leave a state because they're not getting paid enough, or things like that. I just want to, I wondered if you could speak to how you're caring for teachers, how you're caring for other people that work in the school district, that will be on the front lines, that may, unfortunately, I hope never, put themselves in front of a bullet for my children, or someone else's children. What we're doing to care for those folks, what we're doing to encourage them in their work, to, you know, take their mind off of worries that they have about their job, so they can do their job to the fullest. And I guess, you know, I'll address that, you know, for me, as a taxpayer in this county, I personally would be much, I would be glad to pay more taxes, even, if it meant that our teachers can get paid more, because I want them to be on the top of their game, not just for my kids' safety, but my kids' learning and growth. And I think, I also think that ends up being a real value to our community, in terms of an asset that we have to draw people here, to keep people here. So I just wondered if you could speak to that, about, you know, care for teachers, care for other staff members in the schools. Thank you.
You probably just opened a question that I can probably work on for the next hour, but I'll try to limit it much, much shorter than that. A few things that we've addressed. I've been here for, I guess, three rounds of bargaining. When it comes to salary and those kind of things, we have really, I know the school board's efforts, as well as administration and the teachers, have been, what can we do to pay our staff as appropriately as possible? I would still tell you that teachers are underpaid, but I would also tell you that our support staff, meaning our cooks, our custodians, secretaries, bus drivers, all of those people are underpaid in the public sector compared to what they may be able to do in the private sector. There's some, there are some advantages, in some cases, retirement and health benefits and some of that. So we're doing what we can in those areas to appropriately pay those staff. That's one way to show how much we appreciate them, and we will continue to look to put as many dollars and resources into that. And likewise, I would tell you, looking around the country right now, I don't know what's going to happen with teacher salaries, that's a, that's a whole different issue. Another one, I would tell you, that I know parents wonder, why is it we, every Wednesday, my kids go to school a little bit later than they do during the rest of the week? During those delay starts on Wednesday, we use that for multiple training across the staff, whether it's teacher training for maybe a discipline method to use in the classroom, to how to use a new curriculum for math or science, or whether it's safety training, we use those Wednesday mornings to better prepare our staff for all of the various things that they face during a school day. Another one I would tell you, you talked about the raising of taxes, and this is kind of getting out of the realm of this safety meeting, but there was a editorial, I believe, in the Fort Wayne Journal Gazette, I think a week ago Friday, talking about the cost that our state has put into vouchers. If you look at the overall cost to public schools in Indiana, if you look at public schools and you count every public dollar, it has increased. If you look at the money that has went to traditional public schools, it has not significantly increased in over 10 or 15 years. And in fact, if you look at the cost of the voucher program, the Huntington County schools, I believe it's costing us a little bit over $700,000 per year, which correlates into about a 2% raise across the board for all of our staff people, that we are putting into vouchers, which in many cases go to people that were already making the choice, and they have that choice, to attend private or parochial schools, and they're gaining the benefits out of that. So I think that's some other things that we look at, of what are we going to do? But the main things we're looking at, as I said, we're trying to put our dollars and our resources into personnel, and we are doing that training on a weekly basis, and we have some other days in there, that we try to train the people and prepare the people for all of the various tasks that we ask them to do.
I would just encourage as well, we partner with churches as well, if we would have a safety event, so that we can have that backup with, just having that, that relationship with our churches to rely on as well. So preparing our teachers in the event of a safety emergency, we want them to be prepared, we won't want them to go into anything not being prepared. So we help to get them ready for that through different trainings, not just teachers, but our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, all of those. The other thing I would encourage you as community members is, don't hesitate to send a kind word or a kind note to teachers. Being a teacher is tough, and I know that our teachers work very, very hard for your children, and sometimes they don't always get the recognition that they deserve because of all the work that they do. So I would encourage you, and encourage your students, to maybe write a kind note to them, to uplift them in their day, or drop them an email, or a voicemail, and let them know how much they're appreciated, because I think that's important as well, coming from the community, not just administration or fellow teachers. Right. We have our substitute teachers that come into our buildings regularly. We have information available for them. We actually held a training, Mr. Doherty set up a training for our substitute teachers in our corporation to come and be trained on all the things safety-related, or how to respond in situations with students. So we do, we do that process. I also keep an eye on our building specifically, when there is a new sub, I try to make contact with them, to go through things with them one-on-one as well.
I just want to encourage, you know, some of us up here kind of get used to these forums, but I want to encourage, or just thank everybody that has the bravery to walk up to a microphone and ask the questions. I'll thank everybody for those questions.
First of all, again, thank you for your service and everything you've done thus far. A couple of quick questions, really. You said that there are officers on location during lunch hour. Are there officers there at the beginning and the end of the day?
I can address that. We have a school resource officer, Officer Double, who's in our building mainly, but goes throughout all the buildings. During lunch, we do have the officers. In the mornings and throughout the day, we have officers that are assigned to each school that do walkthroughs through those schools on a regular basis. We also have people at, in the high school particularly, with the parking lot, that are out there in the mornings and in the afternoons, and driving through throughout the day.
Okay, and it's not just the high school specifically, it's all schools, correct?
We have an officer assigned.
Yes.
The city police department, we have an officer assigned to each school on day shift. We have one assigned to the high school, his responsibility's come up here to do walkthroughs throughout the day. We have one at Crestview, Riverview, Lincoln, Mont Springs, I think would be the ones. And like I said, each day shift officer is assigned to school. That was started when Chief Carroll is here tonight. I think he implemented that a few years ago, and we've kept that going. And then with the officers in the morning, day shift brings an officer up every day, and they patrol the parking lot in the high school before school. And then at the second shift trick meeting every day, an officer is assigned to the high school parking lot, and they patrol the parking lot prior to the students getting out, and that was implemented probably back when Terry was the chief of police. 20 years ago, he assigned me to go do that, so, yeah.
One of my other questions, you talked about reunification locations. Does each school have its own specific reunification location?
Yes. Each school has their own specific spot based on where they're at.
Does that change, like, year to year? Is it one specific location?
We try to keep it one specific location, and in our schools, we have two, just in case, depending on the situation, that we can make a change, depending on what's going on at that certain time.
Okay.
My question is, what do you do for the elementary students? I hear a lot about, there's officers that, you know, come here, and they walk, and they go through the parking lot, but what do you do as far as elementary students? I have a student that's at Lancaster, and that is a very far drive, so if anything happened, I mean, that's a very far drive for you guys to, you know, go out. But I'm just wondering, what do you do? Is there somebody that's out there that walks the halls and keeps them safe, other than the high school?
I'll speak for the schools that are out, yes. I will tell you that Teddy Spitler in Warren goes through Salamone, he takes, he takes that responsibility on for the Warren folks out there, and is in that school. We're also out there, but not as often as Teddy. And yes, we will hit, we'll go out there at Northwest School, we'll go out there at Lancaster School, and our day, our day trick guys go out there, and they do walkthroughs from that, yes.
So it is.
And they even get told they have to put their little notification badge on, too, so.
Yeah, that's just my concern, because I know the, you know, high school here isn't town, but, I mean, that's one of my big concerns, because I didn't even know where Lancaster was at when my son started kindergarten, because it's really far out there. But that's just my concern, because I don't, because I totally understand, after hearing you guys say about, you know, not arming the teachers, but, I mean, are we going to put, you know, retired officers at each elementary school to just prevent, because even elementary kids sadly are taking guns, you know, to the school? And I don't know, we got to find a medium somehow.
Well, we are, we are out there, so we are doing walkthroughs, absolutely. So we've got a good relationship with the principals and the administrators in the buildings, all the buildings, and that's not going to change.
Again, I want to thank you guys for your service, and the opportunity to come here and speak tonight. My name is Mike. I did 18 years in the United States Army, all infantry, airborne. What I'm about to say is, I've trained a lot of men, and a lot of my job was to figure out the worst-case scenario for my men, and how to do things to bring them home. I went to Iraq, I've been to foreign countries, I've done a lot of things across the seas, and I've brought my men home. Training with the Alice and the Raptor, to me, seems like it's just a check-the-box. I don't want to upset anybody, and I don't want anybody to be mad about it, but it seems to me it's a check-the-box. A couple checks here for the year, a couple checks here for the year. What happens when there's a coordinated attack at multiple schools? What happens when you hear, wherever you take your kids, your reunification sites, they're hit at the same time as your schools are hit? Do you have enough training, assets, or anything like that, to be able to take down multiple threats? You guys train with one aggressor hitting a school. The school, your video shows one guy lazily walking through the school, pushing on a door. It's going to happen a lot quicker than that. The guys in badges know that. Y'all know that. And it's upsetting to know that these kids are getting trained this way, and they're, "Yeah, okay, we're getting the Raptor checks, the parents and everybody's getting the badges, and we're going to do this check. Okay, well, I think we're up for it for maybe August of this year, we're going to have another active shooter drill." And, yeah, that's great, boxes checked. But what happens when there is an coordinated attack? And it's not just one lone kid that was bullied, or is upset about something, or, you know, has mental, whatever it is. It's coming, and I don't want to be that bearer of bad news, or, I mean, everybody thinks about it, and it sucks, but that's what's going to happen. Do we have, as local first responders, do we have the ability to deal with a coordinated attack on two fronts?
I will tell you, first of all, thank you for your service for our country, I appreciate that, and, and, and just thank God there's men like you out there that protect our borders, I really do. I would tell you that Trent, Chad, and I, Chris, we all are armed with a bunch of specialty weapons that we train with. It's just not the pistols that we have on here.
I understand.
The silencers, so the percussion inside type that we have, or anybody else, shotguns, some pretty sophisticated weaponry that we just bought from Block. And like you said, God forbid we never have to use that kind of stuff, but yet we do train with that.
Okay.
We do shoot together, we do talk about this on a weekly basis, and it's more than checking the box. We use, in this particular high school, the last time we trained, we used, the kind of ammunition wasn't the, Shentfield had the, I mean, we were using the blanks, but, I mean, it was, it made everybody think, when, you know, some of the cooks and some of the staff that we had here, you could, they could tell immediately, they weren't, they didn't see that coming.
Right.
And so with what we have, with the time permitted to do that, and that kind of training, we do train actually more than what anybody knows. So can we stop every kind of attack? If five people hit us, that's tough. I mean, where's it coming from? I mean, we get that. We're never going to be able to go over every scenario that happens, but we'd like to think that we're fairly well-trained in the weaponry that we have. And I would tell you that if we see more than, our first call is, we get SWAT, we get SWAT down here. And I mean, that's all they do, is they train, 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 more than I, they just train, 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 train for that, so 20 minutes away.
Well, I'm not trying to what-if. I mean, I can sit here and what-if all day.
Absolutely, and we want to what-if.
Right.
That's how we become more prepared and have plans in place. As a, as a community, do we have enough people to fight two fronts? Well, it's going to depend on the attack, it's going to depend on the timing, it's going to depend on the things that are happening during those two times. We will have enough officers to go different directions and at least confront, and what officers we may lack will be coming here really soon. Because they will be coming from other counties, and it will be, even in, and I don't want to, I hesitate to use the word impressive during a tragedy, but if something were to happen from the town marshals, to the city, the county, the state, all the way up to the feds, there's going to be a presence here that will overwhelm everybody, and things, things will happen quickly. As you know, situations do unfold very quickly, and we will respond as soon as we can. And as far as the drills go, I know with the state, we, when we go through our training, and we deal with stuff like that, and then we train with the local agencies, too. And we are bringing some of that training, maybe not with the firearms, but I'm on a safety committee for Allen County, Southwest Allen County, Southern Wells, and each of these districts are doing, the same thing we're doing, with the training, whether it be the check-the-box training, or thinking out-of-the-box training. And... And the, the children are starting to do their drills too, just like they would a tornado drill, just like they would a fire drill. They are learning how to hide, they're learning how to evacuate, they're learning how to counter, and we are, we're doing, we feel like we're doing everything that we possibly can. But I would love to talk to you afterwards and pick your brain and see where we can improve, because no matter how much we think we're doing, sometimes we do kind of get tunnel vision, and we need some outside thoughts, and we welcome those.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your service.
One question, Mr. Harrison, I hear quite a bit. People want to know, and I think I'll let the prosecutors answer this, question that I hear is, okay, if I engage, and, and they're in our room, and I pick up a big weight, and I hit the guy in the head that's got a gun, am I going to get in trouble?
No. No, I know, it, it is, but, I mean, there's self-defense in the state of Indiana, your response has to be reasonable, but it is a situation that if you are defending yourself or others, that we analyze that to make sure the proper steps were taken, but if you are in a situation where it's an active shooter, there's somebody comes into the school with a gun, and you're trying to physically restrain or keep that person from harm, you are not going to be prosecuted, you're not going to be celebrated.
I know you guys are faced with budgets every year and how to allocate your funds, and obviously, you know, anything you do from a safety perspective requires additional funds, that's probably not in your current budgets. Is there anything from a community standpoint that we can give funds to the school, you know, like a general fund or something to allow for some of these technologies to maybe be brought into the schools? I know there's stuff out there, additional cameras, special PA systems that allow for the schools to track where the active shooter would be, that allows the, the officers that are coming in to know exactly where they can focus their attention to. So I guess for the people in this room, what can we do outside of tax dollars to help out?
I think the number one thing is the tax dollars. And the other one is obviously, actually, almost every one of our board meetings, we have donations for various things. So the school district's always open to that. Probably the one I would hesitate one, if you, if you find out there's a really good camera, or there's a really good, you know, something or another out there for the home market, it may or may not be appropriate for the schools. It may not integrate with our technology, because as we look at it, we try to make sure everything works throughout that. I think, I think the best thing that you could, best thing you can do is be here tonight, and I applaud all of you for giving of your time to be here to, to find out what we're doing. And beyond that, I think we are looking at, obviously, a fixed amount of resources that go anywhere from maintaining our buildings, to paying the, the staff members, to, you know, transporting students, and, as well as provide the safety and all of those things that go into it. So as we look at all of those, we can probably never spend enough, but are we spending as much as we possibly can to best meet the safety needs of the students in our, in our school district? And I know we've spent over hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think some of the changes, whether it's, you know, if you look at the elementaries over the, or look at all of our buildings over the past, I don't know when it started, probably eight or 10 years ago, I would guess, to, you know, used to, you just simply walked into the school building, where now you have to buzz your way into each of our school buildings, to the Raptor system, so all of those cost dollars, and you may look at it and go, what's a doorbell on the school cost? Well, it's not the same as going to the local, you know, Menards or Lowe's or wherever, buying a doorbell. It's much more sophisticated than that to, to provide the door opening and the release and all of that. So we are looking at ways to do that. As we, I will tell you right now, most of you know, we're looking at building a new elementary in Roanoke, and one of the concerns that we have on that building is, what do we do to build into that building the most current, reasonable safety features into it beyond a classroom? We're going to be looking at, we're already starting the process of looking at renovations, and what do we do to maintain Huntington North High School? We're going to look at that. One of the, we just had a, actually, a meeting earlier today, and we were looking at academics, we were looking at athletics, we were looking at administration and offices, and we were looking at safety was one of the big five items that we were looking at, is we're looking to renovate and maintain all of our buildings. So that's one of the things at the top of our list anytime we make those kind of things, but the support of the parents, the public, those that don't have kids in school, make a big difference.
I just know that there's technology out there, and sometimes, and again, I don't know if you guys can do this, but asking for that additional help, you always see people that are looking for, doing fundraisers, so, you know, when it comes to our school systems, our teachers, our kids, I think that, you know, hey, put a fundraiser out there, let us go for it.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Bradford, and I actually had a couple of questions. One, with the lockdowns for like Lancaster, their classrooms have no doors, so how would you be able to lock down the classrooms?
Those, those situations make it difficult. One thing that we've done is we've asked teachers to look at their classrooms and look at things that can be put in that entryway. Lockdowns are time barriers for people trying to get into our kids. So we've looked at rearranging things so that things can be put in that area to block that entryway. That's one thing we've looked at. Also, as we look at changing our buildings, obviously, we're looking at not having that so that we can have doors on all of our classrooms.
I was going to say, in, in addition to that, I think that was, as we looked at, how do we right-size the school district? That was one of the concerns. How do we maintain those buildings, providing the safety? You know, how do we provide a dry roof? How do we provide all of those resources? And that was one of the factors that went into the, ultimately, the school board voting to close Northwest and Lancaster. Not that we wanted to, but when we look at all this, so that was a consideration of that also as we, as we looked at that.
And second question, I have two special needs children that actually go to Lancaster as we speak, and one of my concerns, which I normally, a couple buses have it, versus bus safety, is like seatbelts for in case of a bus accident, or, you know, anything like that. I have, my daughter is an epileptic, and my son has several palsy, and a brain injury that he's, has brain damage, and he's a major runner, which he's calmed down, but he does run off. And trying to make sure that they're also safe, their safety on the school buses too.
That's one thing, a couple of things going there with the school buses. First off, currently in Indiana, there is no requirement for mandated safe belt or safety belts and in-school seatbelts. On some of those, or some of our special education buses, we do have special harnesses to protect those kids in the transportation to and from school. And buses today are designed to, as they talk about, encapsulate students within the confined spaces. I mean, I can tell you, and this was about 100 years ago, Sheriff Stoffel, but, you know, whenever I grew up, you had a seat, and there was a metal bar across it, where now truly that whole space, front and behind, students as they sit in the seats are padded, they have those types of things, that in the case of an accident, it protects the students. And I, I would tell you that the school buses, the buses that we have throughout the country, not just in Huntington, have some real strong safety features there to provide that. But we, as we update buses, we have a 12-year rotation on buses. As we update buses, and some of them get used and we trade those in, we look at the safety features as we update and provide new, new buses into our transportation fleet each year.
As an educator of Huntington Community, in Huntington Community Schools, I appreciate all the training we've received so far. The Alice training we received from Mr. Kiefer and from Chris, sorry, I'm forgetting, Chris Newton, has been wonderful. I would hope though that we would get, get an opportunity to get more of that type of training. I like the fact that we are actually going to be doing a drill in August, but I would almost offer that maybe, although we do drills for fire drills monthly, could this be a quarterly drill that we do? Our kids, I don't think, experience enough to understand how the drills work, so when we, when we bring it into the classroom, they look at us like, okay, what do we do? And we kind of guide them, but we don't spend a lot of time like we do, because, I mean, we're focused on the academics, of course, but their safety is also at our utmost importance. So my hope is that we would consider those quarterly drills as opposed to just once a year, or once every other year, just to get them more used to, and to get teachers more used to what we're doing. I appreciate all that we do, all the officers, what the school corporation does, but I just wanted to give that input. Thank you.
I don't see anybody moving, so I think I'm going to wrap this up. There's, there's a few other things that I want to conclude with, and hopefully you've got a sense of it up here tonight. I guess the thing I would tell you is, when you look at this panel, this wasn't a panel brought in of outsiders that are experts in particular areas. These are the people that we work with, every one of us, when we've had situations. One, whatever it was, a month or so ago, I can tell you that I was out for the evening, and I had received a phone call from Sheriff Stoffel that made me aware of the situation, and immediately I was on the phone with other administrators to let them know what was going on, and we were talking to Chief Hacker, and we were in constant communication. We had plans, talking about the different scenarios we had, that if this happens, here's the way we're going to react, if this happens, here's the way it's going to react. For those that don't know, you know, ultimately, I have the responsibility of whether we have the two-hour delays and the cancellations and all of that, and I take that seriously also, but in the particular instance that I'm thinking of, I told our transportation director, if I don't get to the phone, and if you hear from Sheriff Stoffel, and he says that we're closed or we're under a two-hour delay, that's the same thing as me calling the two-hour delay. So I think the communications that we have across the board are extremely, extremely strong and good here in Huntington County. I want to put in a little bit of a thing, you here may not know it, but we are live streaming this event. I think afterwards, I'm sure our technology people can put this onto our school website, so if there's somebody else that says, well, what'd they talk about there? You can say, here's what they talked about, or you can say, hey, go to the school website, and you can click on the video, and you can watch the, the whole event. So I think that's one thing that we've really changed in the last year and a half, that the board is looking at the transparency and how do we get this information out. While I mentioned the board, I know that I think Mr. Yager is here, and Mr. Chris Jansen, or at least they were earlier, and again, I can't see faces out there, Mr. Ross out there, I was told, I hear whispered in my ear, so I thank those board members also for attending. And just to conclude it, again, I want to thank Mrs. Kraft, Chief Hacker, Officer Kiefer, Prosecutor Richardson, Sheriff Stoffel for their time this evening, and I know I will be around afterwards if you have any additional questions or anything, and I'm sure they would be willing to stick around a little bit, but thank you so much for your time, and if you have those questions, please send them our way either tonight or in the future. So thank you for attending this evening.